Mayor Clayton is going to be attending virtually today, but since she can't be in the room, she asked me to chair, and I'd ask us to all start with please rise to the National Anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With flowing hearts, we see thee rise to north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
As always, a big thank you to Neil Towns for singing and recording the anthem for us and to our city staff for captioning those images for us. And I also want to acknowledge that the city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver, Cree, Dunay, and Métis people as original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. So thankful for the people that took care of this land before we got here for it to be a great place for us to raise our families. I will ask for a motion to adopt the previous City Council minutes. Counselor Thiessen.
Well, I feel so blessed to be able to do this with Counselor O'Connor not in the house today, but I would move that to counsel adopt the minutes of the City Council meeting held May 20th as presented.
It's any conversation or debate, so I'll call that question.
Counselor Berg in favor.
And that motion carries and-
They're in the East Grab. It looks like there's an error. It says I'm absent. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we might have a few of those for the beginning of the meeting, but we will capture it accurately. Yeah, our recording secretary is on it. All right, and then I have Counselor Berg. If you would move the agenda, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. I would like counsel to adopt the agenda as presented.
Call that question.
Berg in favor.
And that motion carries, and we will start with our delegations. So I know you know the drill, but if you'll come up to the table and for the sake of people at home who don't know you, if you'd introduce yourselves, I'd appreciate that. And you've got about five minutes to present, followed by questions from my colleagues.
Hundred percent. Thank you, Counselor Bressi. Thank you, fellow counselors here too. Appreciate you having us in today. My name is Jonathan Clarkson. I'm with Nighthawk around Adventure Park. I'm the general manager. We also manage the Bear Paw par three golf course and RV park on behalf of the City Grand Prairie, and that's why we're here today. I'm joined by Percy Britton, one of our volunteer board of directors, also a longtime board of director and been a past president and a president and all that kind of thing on the board. So thanks, Percy. Reason we're here today is, so previously we had presented back before budget about saving the driving range at Bear Paw. After some discussion following that motion that was made by council, we've been discussing with administration about Nighthawk engaging with community partners and looking at ways that potentially we could look at saving the range. And that, the first step of that was engaging with ISL engineering on a secondary structural assessment on the poles to see if they had deteriorated any further since the first assessment was done two years ago. We just got that report back on May 26th. Pole number one on the range, looking at the range on the left, has deteriorated a little further. We've got about seven inches of actual solid structure underneath that pole. The advice from ISL was to essentially cut off access to that pole in particular because it did pose a risk to the public. The city has since set up some six-foot event fencing. That was a suggestion that I made to administration. And also as part of that, I guess the request we would like to have is that by cutting off access to that pole, if it's not to be taken down, that we leave that fencing up, leave signage up saying, you know, do not access, and allow us to open the range for the rest of the season. The rest of the poles that were inspected have got at least one more season out of them. None of them had deteriorated any further as per that report. And I think it was about, hold on a second here. About, I think it was about six of them that would get one more season, and then the remainder would get at least two more seasons out of them. So as I had presented back in September, you know, we wanted to buy ourselves a little bit more time to work on other solutions, engage other community partners in that. I did have Percy had reached out to a contractor just himself here as well and found a cost of about $3,000 for the first pole. If we were to replace it, they would, that was without any donation or anything like that. That's not us engaging somebody like Atco or something like that to donate the pole. We have already started reaching out to other community partners to see if they would be interested in helping us with that and keeping it alive. Just to give counsel some context, every day since we've opened on May the 2nd, we've been turning away about 20 people a day from the range that have been coming up to the clubhouse, bypassing the signs that we have up saying range is closed and all that kind of thing, actually coming up and having the conversation. Phone calls have also been coming in, and then of course, there's the people that you watch from the clubhouse that just turn around and leave the facility after they see the sign. So I think that there's a large part of the community that still sees value in the facility, and that's why we'd like to request from council that we're able to operate the facility for one more season with the recommendation that ISL gave in their report of cutting off access to that first pole before we were to open the range. The other request we'd have to counsel is, obviously counsel had directed administration to, I think he was allocating about $47,000 to the decommissioning of the range, being that we can buy one more year out of this first pole anyway, and the other six. If we were to reallocate that to an actual engineered design, so asking administration to basically move forward with getting an engineered design done up so that we can see what it actually would cost to replace the poles on the range. Again, like I said, that's before we even engage any community partners. I've made calls in that, and there is interest from community partners in terms of donating and getting visibility for their organizations. So I just don't want counsel to completely write off the facility, I guess. Percy, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just to clarify, on the pole, the one we're looking at changing is one of the worst ones there. It's the one with the lights on it and stuff, and Victor, Victor Powerline has gone and taken a look at it and given me a quote of $3,000 to change that one, and all the other ones would like to be a lot less. I'm thinking in the range of $2,000 to $2,500 at the max to change the rest.
I'm not seeing anybody in queue, so a question that, oh, there we go. It is, it's filled up now. Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Bressi. So gentlemen, from what I recall, there wasn't a strong business case for the city to go reinvest. I believe it was $800,000. So what was the charge to access the driving range? What were you guys charging for that?
So we're charging roughly about $12 to $14, depending on the size of bucket that you buy.
Okay, and so if you're turning 20 a day, you're looking at 300, 400 bucks.
Yeah, that's right. And that's again, not the ones that we would actually be not seeing come up to the range itself and the phone calls that we're receiving.
Yeah, and I guess from previous years, you'd actually have those revenue totals, and I'm sure that we've heard them. So as far as that space go, is the driving range plan A, B, and C at this point?
At this point, yes. I mean, some of the other considerations have been, do we put in RV sites? Well, that would require power and water. So now we're disturbing the surface even further, right? So we have talked to landfill experts out of Edmonton that deal with landfill remediation and that. Again, replacing poles with exact same thing, I mean, the things that they're saying, methane monitoring, obviously if there was any, I forget, methane monitoring, but also the mixture of fresh water and garbage, I can't remember what the exact term is, but that would be a concern that would have to be considered. But in terms of just replacing the same pole with the same thing, basically pulling it out and replacing with the same structure would not be as, I guess- out and replacing with the same, same structure would not be as, I guess, in depth of a process as I think we may be considering, we may be thinking.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Councillor Plott.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Bressi. Can you just, I appreciate Councillor Berger jogging my memory on the $800,000, but how many poles are there in total in that area?
There's 19 currently right now. We would suggest that we add a 20th pole on the, on the right-hand side of the range because right now, if somebody has a wicked right chank there, they're gonna go over the trees. So this, and the pole that Percy was getting a quote on was actually a 65-foot transmission pole as well. So that would be higher than what's there right now.
Okay, so I'm just curious, have you guys looked at recording the whole thing? Because it seems like, if my math's way off, but like 800,000 seems pretty extreme to what potentially if we replaced 20 poles and netting could be. Have you guys quoted it out entirely or just the one pole replacement at this point?
Just the one pole so far, but I believe that's likely the most expensive one. And if you bring a crew in, you like to get a little bit of saving on demobilization and mobilization, so.
Okay, no perfect, thanks.
Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Bressi. Thanks for coming in, Jonathan and Percy. Question for you, I've had some of my questions already checked off, but in regards to the ISL report that you guys had, is my understanding and my recollection that there was more than just the one pole? I think there's maybe three or four other poles, three? Okay, that were deteriorating. Did it intimate like the full scope of the project and how long it might last before you have to replace those other three poles too, or altogether all 20 poles?
So the recommendation was with the other three poles, that within a year they'd be replaced. And then the rest, I believe it was saying, it said that essentially we would get up to two years out of them, but after two years that they would recommend another, another structural assessment on those poles to see if there was any further deterioration, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much. When ISL come in, did they do any gas monitoring at the pole site?
That wasn't part of, part of the structural assessment at all, so.
And you haven't done it as well?
No.
Okay. We're just concerned that the legalities of what was done in 1970s and 80s has changed to 2025, right? So.
And I realize that that was, you know, in terms of the high-level cost estimate that was done, you know, environmental is obviously a large concern. But I think the thing that we're looking at and with Percy looking into the replacement of this first pole is that if we were allowed to do one, see what we're dealing with, if anything, and then that would allow us to have a better estimate as to what, what we could be dealing with going forward.
And there's no way of knowing how deep those poles are actually embedded in the ground?
So in talking to Atco Electric, they said usually about 10% of the pole is below, below surface. So if you're dealing with a 70-foot pole, then you're about seven feet, right? So.
Cool. Thank you.
I'm not seeing anybody else in my queue, so I'll thank you for coming in. Thank you for all the work you do running this amenity. And we'll get through our committee business and then we'll decide whether or not we want to do anything with this request when we get through committee business.
Okay, thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. And with that, we don't have any reports go through. We do have Investment and Strategy Committee, and since I'm chairing this meeting, I've asked Mayor Clayton to do the business coming to that committee for me.
Thanks, Chair Bressi. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the investment. The Strategy Committee meeting held May 27th as presented.
Not seen any conversation or debate, so I'll call that's question. And that motion carries. Mayor Clayton?
Thanks, Chair Bressi. Couple items of business today. The first one being the Borsted Hill Electrical Infrastructure. If you recall, council admitted a decision that investing in this infrastructure to support the amenities of Bear Creek Fest as well as offerings of other potential future events would be a good investment. So administration went away to explore this. The initial stages have been completed. We're contracting an engineering firm and really preparing what needed to be done, identifying the appropriate location. All that said, the construction tender are recently closed, however, the work cannot be completed in time for this year's festival. So council, knowing that this was an integral part of the festival this year and knowing that Bear Creek Fest hadn't funded or budgeted rather for the replacement of what was going to be for them, council has put forward, or committee rather, put forward a motion that council approved $30,000 operational funding to support the 2025 Bear Creek Fest festival fuel and generators, with $25,000 being funded from the Community Enhancement Fund and $5,000 from the Arts Development Operational Fund. That being said, we recognize that this will get done in time for next year's event. Simply wasn't enough time for this year's event and wanted to make sure that the festival was in a good position to be able to go ahead with their plans. This was a one-time sort of funding. There was some questions that came out of that report in regards to flood mitigation and potential locations. Chief Graven has addressed those and emailed council, and there were no concerns coming from Chief Graven. So I recommend that council support this motion. Thank you.
Anybody with any questions or debate? I'm not seeing any, so I will call this motion's question. And that motion carries. And Mayor Clayton, are there any meeting highlights?
My apologies, I was muted. Yeah, the other item I just wanted to address was the meeting highlights. They are in your package, however, a few things that were of interest. International Museum Day this year was another great success with over 350 participants visiting the museum, which is up 23% from 2024. So thank you to the organizers and the staff that put that on, and thanks to our residents to engaging and learning more about our great museums. I also wanted to highlight that Invest Grand Prairie is working and continues to work with the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital, but what we recently did was celebrate Nurses' Week. You hear a lot of conversation around what we're doing in attraction and retention for healthcare professionals and particularly in doctors, but this was an opportunity to celebrate nurses. So we had an incredible attendance. I understand there were about 250 nurses that were on site in our calculation, so really happy to be able to take that opportunity to thank the nurses for the incredible work that they do to make people stay in healthcare more comfortable. And with that, I will complete my update. Thanks, Chair Bressi.
Thank you for taking that update for me. I really appreciate it. And I will turn over to Councillor Thiessen to do business with Public and Protective Services.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Bressi. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held on May 27th as presented.
I will call that's question. That motion carries. And are there any highlights you'd like to share, Councillor Thiessen?
Quite a few. There's always something happening in Public and Protective Services and a lot of good stuff, too. During the meeting that day, we had some updates from the Grand Prairie Policing Committee and the Grand Prairie RCMP laying out their 2025 plan of service goals. And then later, we received an update from the Grand Prairie Police Commission and Grand Prairie Police Service on where they're at as far as policing is going in the city of Grand Prairie. Earlier in the day, too, prior to committee meetings, our Grand Prairie Police Service received a very generous $7 million check, which was the back half of the province's commitment to our municipal police transition. So we are fully paid and we are fully grateful for that contribution, for the transition to new police service here in our fair city. As far as other things that happened for service area updates, enforcement continues in the composite high school area, parking area, warning tickets have been issued to over 30 drivers recently. This is in response to a lot of the drag racing going on late at night on that one strip, and some residents had made a complaint and Enforcement Services has jumped all over that, and we thank them for that. Speaking of RCMP, Corporal Ull of the Community Engagement and Diversity Unit has been busy conducting school presentations on bullying, online safety, policing in the community, and human trafficking, as well as giving presentations to Odyssey House, Sunrise House, and the Lifelong Learning Center. Some good news in Recreation, the East Link Center will be winning an award very, very soon. They'll receive the Terry Kavanaugh Junior Lifeguard Club Award from the Life Saving Society of Alberta at their AGM later on. This award is to recognize East Link Center for running the largest number of junior lifeguards club participants in a community of less than 100,000. So congratulations to that, and thank you for all those young workforce people who want to help keep people safe in our pools and save lives. The opening date for the Aqua Terra Outdoor Pool is today, but it's not really the sunniest day in the world. But, you know, if you do want to check it out, bring the whole family on June 6th. It's perfectly free to go down there as we kick off the summer blast here in Grand Prairie. Finally, yeah, sorry, that was it. The Here Comes Summer Event, I got the name of it there. The Here Comes Summer Event on June 6th includes free swimming at the Aqua Terra Outdoor Pool. So get your swim trunks on, grab your towel, go down. We've got lots of extra safety enhancements around that pool area so you can be safe, secure, and have lots of fun with your family. And that's all.
Excellent. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Councillor Plott for Operational Services.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bressi. I just make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held May 27th as presented.
I'll call that's question. That motion carries. Any highlights from the meeting?
We did have one, piece of business to do from the committee. So just make the motion that Operations Services Committee recommends council allocate $396,643 from the 2024 Storm Capital Improvement Budget to the spillway armoring project. And just to speak to this, it was discovered that the armoring with, that protects a dam during normal flood operations has failed. And so there's some concern if we don't get this addressed that it could lead to bigger problems. So it's kind of something we need to do, and I don't believe this has any tax impact because it's actually just being relocated for funds, so.
Councillor Berg? Yeah, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. So one question around this, and I know we talked about it in committee, but I'll bring it up here at council, is one of the options when we're doing our Bear Creek consultations with the public is to tear out the dam. So why would we even consider this when tearing out the dam is one of the options? So if one of our chiefs would like to speak to that?
Chief Graven?
Thank you, Chair Bressi. This is a regulatory requirement regardless of what we do with either of the projects or independent of each other. We are compelled to do this. If we don't do it, we can be forced to do it. And right now, we're within the window that we have to complete these regulatory upgrades. So as far as the costs go, there's two components of the cost. There's the labor and equipment to place all of the armoring, and then there's the armoring itself. The armoring can be used in any of the scenarios if council chooses to decommission the dam or do any of the other things that are presented in the consultation.
Yeah, thank you. And just speaking a little bit to this, just kind of doing a straw poll, it doesn't seem that that is a real viable option environmentally, even from the county. There's some flood concerns that have been raised on both ends outside the city, along with in the city. So while that might be one of the options, city's just doing its due diligence and looking at all options, and that's one of them. So, yeah, this is something I'll support.
Not seeing anybody else in the queue, so I will call this to question. That motion carries. And now I'll ask you for highlights, Councillor Plott.
All righty. It's a couple of areas. We did have a, we did have a discussion and we ended up, just we had some business arising within our meeting that we had, we quest for waiver fees for the Ken Sergeant House. So I believe they had their sergeant recently as well, but we did do some business there where we approved that we wouldn't charge them the fees, waived the fees and securities with levies remaining applicable. Some other items to update on are Engineering and Transportation Services, residential street twinning is scheduled to begin next week. The RFP for 132nd Ave and 116th Street Twinning has been posted. The following is now closed. The RFT for Borsted Electrical Hill, which we just scupped cabinet, the RFR for the stormwater rehabilitation, the RFP for the bridge repair and maintenance, and the RFT for road rehabilitation Phase 5. Corporate management, the East Link Fieldhouse, geez, I can't speak, refurbishment will take place June 2nd to 20th, so come on up here right away. East Link Squash Court's front wall refurbishing will take place May 26th to 29th, so it's completed now. And the tender for the Centre 2000 Sundell Breck refurbishing has been posted, and that's my report.
Great, thank you, Councillor Plott. We have no items correspondence, so we are at delegation business. So I am looking around, seeing if anybody wants to ask any questions or do any business, and Councillor Plott is first in the queue.
Thank you. I'm just, I guess I'm looking to administration, how much risk would we be at if we let this stay open for another year and then did pivot to looking at some engineering studies and then maybe give Nighthawk more of an opportunity to see if they can work more on it as well.
CEO Burke?
Thank you, Chair Bressi. If there was some interest in keeping open for a year, I'd like to do some further analysis. We've just received this updated to the ISL report. I'd like to take that away. I'll say that I certainly am concerned in the report we had from two years ago. Put me in this place where I was uncomfortable in allowing this to continue, and we'd offered a path at budget time to do some work. I'd say it's high in that we have some reports that I'm certainly concerned about, but I'm happy to work with Nighthawk on this and come back with some further advice.
And I appreciate that, CEO Burke. I'm just curious, as we're taking, we're into June now, and this is a seasonal kind of a thing, is this something that could be happen fairly quickly with them? Just to know if it's an oh-go or a go this year still yet?
Well, we're, we'll commit some time to it and work with them here this week. My concerns certainly on, just on the surface are, we have, we have now multiple reports saying that this pole needs to be replaced. We also had reports saying that it wasn't even just the poles being replaced, that there looked like there needed to be some reconfiguration to protect the residential area. So are we, a piecemeal approach is certainly concerning to me when we know we have other risks that have been, have been identified. So I'm not even sure this one, addressing one pole mitigates enough risk for us to keep this open. So I'm happy to have that discussion with them and report back to council as soon as possible.
Okay, thanks for that.
Councillor Berg? Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So for me, again, I know that we did the full round on this, doesn't seem not long ago, probably a year ago or less, or around budget time, and we rejected it, the business plan just simply wasn't there. And even doing some quick math right now, it seems like it might take 20 years of having it open to recoup the 800,000 that ultimately would be needed. And with that, there's also three other driving ranges within a short drive that are held by private business. So are we in the business of competing? I always support what Nighthawk does. I love their innovation and what they do. I would just like personally to see some new ideas for that space come forward. But with that, my question is, what is the lifespan of a typical pole? Once it's in? Would it be 20 years?
Chief Graven?
Thank you, Chair Bressi. I don't know off the top of my head. It would depend on the type of pole, whether it's treated, untreated. I don't have that.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Mayor Clayton?
Thanks, Chair Bressi. I know we've had multiple conversations on this. Unfortunately, I'm drawing a blank on some of them. I'm curious if the administration can tell me, where are we at for a master, on a master plan for South Bear Creek? You know, obviously council approved additional fall diamonds in the past years. We have done significant work in enhancing and upgrading the camping area, et cetera, South Bear Paw. You know, the Par Three is great, but is there anything on the books for a bigger plan? And with that, Nighthawk as an operational partner aside, is there a grander vision? Do we, do we think that adding more camp sites is the ultimate goal? Do we think that relocating the driving range is the ultimate goal? Do we have other things in a master plan that the next council could consider in what this looks like as a bigger sort of project? We know that many people travel to our region for sporting and sport tourism in particular. We do know that in the city in particular, there isn't a lot of camping and that the campsite itself, when there are events there, is well utilized. And if maybe administration can remind me, is there a bigger master plan on South Bear Creek? Creek?
Chief Clavon?
Thank you Chair Bressi. I'm not aware of any plans for that particular area of South Bear Creek beyond its current use.
Okay, thanks. So if I, if I'm hearing correctly, CEO Burke is going to come back to council with some information on the immediate remedy so that Nighthawk as the operator can utilize the driving range if at all possible, you know, obviously safety in consideration. And from there, council can possibly have other conversations about what the future looks like, that where we're at right now?
And I'd suggest that I do have councillor Teason and councillor O'Toole on the queue, so I don't want to do business yet. But I would stress that if we want to, if we want CEO Burke to come back to us, that we actually make a motion to that effect would be my suggestion to council. Councillor Teason?
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Bressi. I was actually thinking the same question. I was like, well, I know that CEO Burke said that he'd come back and talk with council, but without a motion, we don't really push him into that. I trust him fully, but yeah, I'd be looking to vote on a motion for that as well. I guess maybe I have a bit of a different opinion than councillor Berg. I see the $800,000 cost, but I've also seen how community-led projects sometimes amass a lot more money, whereas it's $800,000 to the taxpayer and the municipality. But with the municipality watching over a project like this, when you have a community group that pulls in the funders, pulls in the projects, the cost of that can go right down. And that's what Mr Clarkson was saying here now, so that intrigued me a bit. The safety part concerns me as well, as does the reports that we received earlier about golf balls getting into the residential neighbourhoods and stuff like that. So if there's a motion to be made, I would like to send CEO Burke and his team to talk with Mr Clarkson and Nighthawk about more than just what they want and what we assume we're going to need to cover that. So if the direction does come back, well, it's untenable and we can't do this, Nighthawk could say that, but it could come back where Nighthawk goes, okay, well now we've got $1.4 million to raise and let's go from there, can we do it or not? And will the city back us on that? But I'd like to see us also lay down our cards so that Nighthawk isn't just piecemealing it as CEO Burke said. And you know, as Mayor Clayton intimated, you know, perhaps there's a larger vision for South Bear Creek that might include the driving range.
CEO Burke?
Thanks Deputy Mayor Bressi. And just to reminder some of the information we provided at budget time, where the steps in the process to keep this open, the first step, which I'm pleased to see they worked with ISL on what was sort of the risk assessment to keep this open for this year, and they've identified some of those pieces. What we also identified in the fall and looked at and proposed funding for was that design piece. We're really at that, to have that more meaningful discussion, that would have to be a part of something here. For us, just to say we can get a $3,000 pole just to replace, I'd say even the delegation indicated that there might have to be some monitoring and things like that. We're into some unknowns that can be known with proper funding. Our hope was that the organisation would go away and do some of that work and bring that back so that we could have a better cost estimate on what reconfiguration or rehabilitation look like. And so those are some of the further steps that I think are necessary. It isn't just a discussion about whether it's a $3,000 pole. I'd say I'd be uncomfortable in saying proceed with that unless we had some of those further questions answered, which was the proposal that we had made at budget deliberations.
Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much. I agree with Burke. My concern is if we put some money in, we take the poles out and we pierce the barrier, whether it's clay or whatever, and then we've got radon gas or methane gas leaking out, we can't stop it. Now we've created a big problem. And so I would like to hear what the report comes back and make a decision after that.
Councillor Plott?
Thanks Deputy Mayor. I'm just curious on the report, is it mostly the environmental side of it? Is that what we're trying to get the context to, or is there any potential design in there of what if? And I guess if you can speak to that a little bit, please. Or somebody could from administration, that'd be great.
Chief Clavon?
Thanks Chair Bressi. Yeah, the report would be more so on the design of how you actually construct the poles to hold the netting at heights that would be higher than what they currently are to protect the housing and adjacent users to the driving range, with the added context of it being on top of a former landfill, which will highly likely affect the cost of doing so. And we know that just from working on the baseball diamonds recently on the other side of the area there, which was also on top of a former landfill.
So I'm just curious, you know, if we've got funding going to that, is that the right funding? And I'm just wondering if spending $40,000 or $50,000 to figure out how to get that structure back and there's the best use of that money? Or if it was, here's other permitted uses or other things we could think we could fit in that and start going to the community and start looking at other potential uses of it? So I'm just asking, I guess for me, I'd have an appetite to figure out the best use of that. I'd love to see how we could still incorporate Nighthawk being the operator if there was a way. But I am concerned this $47,000 could just be a throwaway if we don't end up going to a driving range again.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this $47,000 I believe is decommissioning cost. That's the cost, that's money we put aside just to remove the poles and make the site safe, not to do anything additional.
Okay.
Yeah, Chief Clavon?
Yeah, thanks Chair Bressi. And just for further context, I think it's $42,500 that was allocated for decommissioning. I'm trying to remember the exact cost that we had as a, for design, but I think it was somewhere between $16,000 and $70,000 to do design. So it would be over and above what is currently allocated for decommissioning.
Okay, so it's only the decommissioning that's been allocated so far?
That's correct.
Okay.
Great. I know for me, if we're going to make a motion, it's, I am comfortable taking a little bit of the daily inspections, and if there's ways to limp it along, I'm personally interested in learning about what limping along looks so that the group can potentially go raise some money. I know for me, I'm worried that we put the money we set aside for decommissioning for design work, then there isn't community will, there isn't money to fund that, and then all of a sudden, we also have to find money for decommissioning. So for me, if the, me personally, if we found a solution and the group raised a bunch of money, I'd be pretty comfortable reallocating our money as kind of last in money. But for me personally, I wouldn't be comfortable having our money that's set aside for decommissioning being first in money to make something happen, is my personal opinion. Councillor Plott, you're first in the queue again.
Thanks. On that note, I think we'll just, I'll get some discussion started here and I'll just make a motion that we direct our CEO or administration to meet with Nighthawk to find the best option to reopen the driving range. And I'll leave it at that. The option might be, you need to give us a cheque for $500,000. I'm not sure what it'll look like, but I think if we just leave it at something simple that we just get our administration meeting with Nighthawk, they're very engaged on this. I'm sure they're going to try to work diligently to try to get it open. And I think we can educate them on what that could look like. Maybe they could, to councillor Teason's point, maybe it isn't this year, but maybe they're getting this thing open next year properly with the community funding that's not on the taxpayers' dollars. And something like that I could really get behind, so hopefully can support it.
And it looks like administration understands and is comfortable with implementing that motion should it carry. So I will turn to councillor O'Toole.
Yeah, I'm still concerned about the gases that are in the ground. If they're leaking now, then what's going to happen when we do decide, if we decide to replace the poles? I'm kind of sitting myself, is leave it, decommission it, and move on to find something that can be more profitable for the organisation that's running it. Thank you.
Mayor Clayton?
Thanks Chair Bressi. My question was for Mr Burke. You had mentioned impact to adjacent neighbourhood. Can you give me an indication of what levels of concerns have you heard? Is this, one has some particular, council's very well informed in regards to impacts from community hockey rinks, with pucks going into yards. But tell me to what level golf balls are going into people's yards and what level concern we're hearing from residents that are adjacent to the facility?
Yeah, Burke? I'd have to include that back when I report back. I don't recall it information from when we brought it forward at budget time.
Okay, thank you.
A question I've got is, if this motion carries, there definitely is a seasonality here, would it be fair to ask for us to get a verbal updated committee next week, even if it's, hey, wait a little bit more, but at least get a status update next week at committee?
I will make that commitment as we'll attempt to do that. We will update either way next committee, whether we're able to come to some solutions or need more time. So we'll do that next week.
Yeah, and for me, it's not, I respect we might not get solutions next week, but just I'd appreciate just being in the loop of, hey, when can we expect solutions and just, yeah. Alright, I'm not seeing anybody else in the queue, so I will call this to question. And that motion carries, are we okay for business on the delegations? I think so. With that, I will call us to recess. We'll be back at 6pm for a delegation and a few public hearings. Thank you everybody.
You're welcome. Thank you for your participation. If you have any questions, please let us know. We will be happy to answer them. Thanks for joining us. We hope you enjoy the show. We hope you enjoy listening to our podcast. 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 We hope you enjoy listening
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back to our City Council meeting. Mayor Clayton is joining us online, but since she can't be in the room today, she asked me to take the chair for her. Our first order of business, we've got delegations. Ms. Kemper, I know who's going to come speak to us, and you're bringing a friend. So if you'll both come on up and sit down at these tables in front of you. The mics don't have to be super close to you, but they do have to be pointed at your mouth. And if you just introduce yourselves, I'll give you about five minutes to share what you want to share with us, and then we'll follow that with my colleagues can ask any questions you have.
Okay, my name's Wendy Kemper. I live in the Swan Even area.
My name is Caroline Ruttberg, and I live in the Swan Even area as well.
So Caroline, if you could just pull that mic just a little bit closer to you. Just make sure it's right in front of your mouse.
Okay.
There, that sounds really good. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to address the council here with the rabbit issue that we are having in the Swan Even area. We would like to address the feral rabbit population that has been multiplying rapidly in the Swan Even area, which is causing significant damage to our community as the rabbits are consuming plants, flowers, destroying lawns, gnawing on trees, creating holes in the ground, which poses a hazard and dangers, especially for us seniors, because a lot of these holes are ankle breakers. It has also created a financial burden on residents for replacing plants and extensive lawn repairs. For this petition, we have well over 30 signatures, but we mainly canvassed only the direct neighbors in our neighborhood that we knew are having issues with the rabbits or by names that were given to us. The reason for this is why we wouldn't go door to door is because there's a lot of animosity within the community between the folks who love the rabbits and those who continue to feed the rabbits and that have had enough of their destruction. There are people feeding the rabbits on other people's private property. Some children are running through our private yards and trampling through the flower beds in an effort to catch, feed, or pet the rabbits, and they're not paying attention to the busy streets. Some of the Swan Even seniors do find it difficult physically and financially to battle this rabbit issue. We have noticed a large, significant amount of rabbits at the Decoy and Swan Even schoolyards. Do you think it's healthy for these kids in the Swan Even schoolyards to be rolling around in rabbit poop and pee? Would this not be classified as unsanitary for these children? For the past five years, we've been trying to deal with the rabbit issue. Residents have been trying to deter the rabbits by coming into their yards in the following ways. We've used slingshots, super soaker water gun, deer and rabbit repellent, it's Bobex, but obviously the rabbits did not get the memo on the Bobex because it doesn't work for the rabbits. We've used wolf urine, Irish Spring soap, mouse poison, pine cones, trapping, and planting lavender, fencing off the flower beds, gardens, and lawns, which can be a financial problem. We are very frustrated and exhausted, and we would like to see the city of Grand Prairie to put measures in place to control the rabbit population, which is out of control. A resident in our neighborhood did a four-block walk and counted 83 rabbits in that four blocks. Maybe start by sending out information to residents regarding bylaw, C 1103, prohibiting the feeding of feral rabbits. Some residents are not aware they could be fined, and then the city needs to enforce this bylaw. It is getting worse every year. Just to put into perspective for you, according to the Alberta Invasive Species Council, rabbits can have up to three litters each year and begin breeding as young as three months old. A single litter consists of four to 12 kits. So you can imagine after 83 rabbits, say 40 of those rabbits are female, you multiply that by five, which is your average litter size, you now have 200 kits. Take half of those potential females, add the original females, multiply that by five, now we're up to 700 rabbits in the neighborhood. Do it one more time as they breed three times a year. They can have three litters in a year, you now have 2,450 rabbits. Those are just the females. Now add the males to that total, we now have approximately 2,943 rabbits in a four-block radius. We do have a lot of information on from, this was actually off of the city of Grand Prairie site, on the wildlife, native and non-species where rabbits, you'd have to read this here. I'm sorry, I didn't outline that one.
Okay.
And then we also got some information from the Alberta invasive species, especially on the economic impact that these rabbits have. And it has become a very serious problem now in our neighborhood, and we would like bylaw to at least start enforcing the bylaws. In my two-block area, I have five neighbors that are feeding them. And yes, I understand it may be difficult for bylaw to see this because they are feeding them in their backyards. So I don't know how you guys would handle sending out notices to the neighbors and advising them that yes, there is fines for this. I mean, we don't let our dogs poop on the lawn, and you don't want kids running through that. My lawn, I'll tell you, was a huge mess, and I spent a great deal of money having to repair it. It totally killed my lawn. Yes, we understand that rabbit poop can be good fertilizer, but it's the urine that is killing the lawn.
And just a note, after she went and got her lawn done, within a week, they were digging again.
Yeah.
So she spent all that money for.
And our yard has been, has won three awards for a beautiful yard. I have no flowers left, ground flowers left in my yard because the rabbits have dug them all up. They were all perennial bulbs, and they've destroyed my flower beds.
Well, thank you for sharing your experiences, and also I know my colleagues have seen, but for members of the public, there are also our pictures in our agenda package that people can access online if they wish to. So thanks for sharing those pictures with us as well. And Counselor O'Toole, I forgot to clear the queue before we started. Are you hoping to get in, or was that just leftover from our afternoon session? Okay, so then Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Bressi. Just for context, I'm looking for a little bit of history. When did you see the first rabbit, and when do you feel it became a problem?
Two years ago, I sent a, I emailed the city with the rabbit problem. We have a resident who started this four years ago, so it's probably about five years. This year though, this spring, I have to say, it's the worst. It's, they're digging under my veranda, which is all wood. They're digging, they're, they just have dug everything up. But it's started about five years ago.
Okay, so five years it's been an issue prior to that?
Yes.
Because I don't recall rabbits in the city before that.
From what we understand, there was a couple, there was a young lad who decided he didn't want his two pet rabbits, and he let them go, and then that's what we have.
Okay.
Just over at the Decoy Armories, when you walk past there, we couldn't even keep count, there was over 25 rabbits just in a small area that was about the size of this or part, portion of the room. That's a lot of rabbits, just in that little area.
And then one more question, Mr. Chair. So what would you like to see come from this presentation?
Well, first of all, like Caroline said, first, we want you to notify the residents, probably the whole city, because this isn't just a Swan Even problem, but notify everybody that it is, there is a bylaw that you can get fined for feeding the rabbits. Because there are neighbors who didn't realize that they were, that they could get fined for it. So first of all, I think you need to do that, and then it has to be enforced. There has to be something. I've been trapping, I can't trap because everybody's feeding them. They're not coming to my trap. So you know, there's no point in me trapping anymore, it's just a waste of time.
Okay, thanks, ladies.
Okay.
Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Chair Bressi. Just appreciate you ladies coming in and bringing this more to our attention. We have been hearing about in the community, and I know I've drove the area, and it is quite surprising sometimes. Sometimes I haven't seen them, and sometimes they're everywhere, like you're mentioning. I'm just curious, you mentioned potentially trapping them, and when you trap them, what's the program after that? Like if.
I have a, I have, for me personally, I have a person who lives outside of town that's a retired vet, and he takes those, he disposes of them, and then he uses it as food because he rehabilitates owls and eagles and hawks, and so he uses it for food for them. I've only ever caught two.
Okay.
And we do know of another resident who has caught two, and she has given them to somebody who actually keeps them for a couple of weeks and then eats them.
Okay, and one other question. You mentioned lots of folks in the area are feeding, like, can you give me a sense of scale? I know lots of times we're excited about something, we say, everybody's doing, but is this 10, 15, 20, like?
I've got five on my block.
Okay.
That are feeding them. And now they've, they've been posting on Facebook, oh, we've got five little bun-buns that just were born under my back steps, and another lady said, I've got four that were just born. We walked by the Banks condo, so there were eight little bunnies laying on the lawn, you know, and that's just in a block, you know?
So outside of you folks in the community, there's been no education around this of any kind that you're aware of?
We're not sure if these people that are feeding them are aware of the bylaw that there is a fine for this, but this is where bylaw needs to step in and send out notifications to everybody in the neighborhood. I don't know how you would do that, but something's got to be done because, like I said in my presentation, there's a lot of animosity because they are upset with us that we want to do something about this issue. And that's not what our neighborhood is about. We've been a community, and now we're dealing with this issue.
Okay, well, thanks, ladies. We'll have more.
It's gonna be pretty hard for you to do anything, like catch them, unless the feeding stops too.
Because it is in their backyards.
Counselor Teason.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Bressi, and thank you for coming in today, Wendy and Caroline. I know we've had conversations at Wendy's Carolina about this. I know I shared with you that I'm a proud domesticated, not feral bunny owner. One of the things that, it was summertime now, so. One of the things that, it's summertime now, so I'm hearing these solutions, and they're possible to do, but rabbits are a funny creature, like, because I usually feed mine dill, parsley, cilantro, stuff like that, but when the summer rolls around, and he wants to be outside all the time, he doesn't dig outside the yard, he stays in the yard, but eats grass, dandelions, and other stuff too, and so then he comes in because he likes his dill and he gets that one feeding, but my finances stay a little higher as far as feeding the bunny goes. So the reason I bring that up is, there are some members in the community that you say are feeding the bunnies, but bunnies will feed themselves too, whether people are feeding them or not. In lieu of enforcement though, which can be hard, one, to catch the people that are feeding the bunnies, and, two, having the bylaw officers being around to do that and try not to be overly punitive, is there any other solutions that you think the city could do to help curb this situation? You've talked about trapping and feeding, I have ideas myself along that, but are there any other ideas besides bylaw enforcement that you think might help the problem sooner?
Well, you guys, on your website, you have lots of ideas of how to do it, but it's gonna be cost, costly for, you know, putting fencing up. Well, you know, I won't be able to, I gotta hire somebody, and then it's gotta be so deep, so fencing, yes, it's an issue. There's one resident, he actually fenced his front yard, his grass, only his grass. He has a fence, we were hoping he would come with a picture, and he's fenced right around, spent the money to put this little fence, now he has to take that fence down, sorry, now he has to take that fence down to mow his lawn. Like, I mean, you know, there's, there's things that we have been, that's why we told you, we've been trying to do things, we've been trying to, you know, the Irish spring soap, the deer and rabbit repellent, you know, it's not like people haven't been trying, we're not just sitting here saying, you guys deal with it, we've been trying.
We've been doing everything to get rid of it, and then, yes, we can put up fences, but they dig under your fence, and they say you're supposed to, if you want to prevent them from digging under your fence, you have to put some chicken wire or something, at least fifteen inches more underground, because they will dig quite deep. But it's the urine that is the biggest problem, it has, it killed my entire front lawn, and that was very costly to have to try and re-landscape my yard. And not just that, the rabbit poop on my front lawn, it was way too much to even rake up. I had to get somebody to come in and power broom my lawn for me.
And just certainly agree with you on the rabbit urine. Deputy Mayor Bressi, if I may?
Sure, one more.
So the reason why I asked you what can be done, what you think the city might be able to do, is I'm trying to find a fast solution here for you. Now, in the past, we had a beaver issue running around Grand Prairie, and we actually enlisted someone to help break through the dams, trap some of the beavers, and sort of take that down so we didn't have any, you know, buildup of waters and potential floods or a migration of the creek, for instance. Do you think that's a viable solution? If the city were to hire maybe, who knows, trappers or First Nations trappers or something like that to...
Okay, well, I'll refer you to Canmore. Canmore had a feral rabbit problem. They ended up having to spend six hundred thousand dollars to try and get rid of their rabbits, and then what happened, how do you say that again, that disease they got?
Maragic disease.
Within the rabbit population, which is what actually wiped out the rabbits, it had nothing to do, well, I guess part of it was the trapping, but it was the disease, and the disease actually got into the wild rabbits, and the, there was another little pica, that's what it is. So there lies, part of your problem too, is if this gets blown out, now you're looking at disease, and that's spreading too.
Yeah, and on your page here, it even says that it is important not to feed native and non-native species as it can have significant impact on the local ecosystem and wildlife. Plus, it is bringing up a lot of coyotes in our neighborhood, which is very close to the school, and we've got a lot of young families and children in the neighborhood, you know, so...
And Canmore, and Canmore, back to Canmore's instance, they had the coyotes, of course, they're a smaller community too, but they had the coyotes coming in, and three kids got bit by the coyotes. Now, whether they were trying to save the bunnies from the coyote or what happened, I don't know, but that, we talked to a resident here the other day who's probably three blocks in from the park, and she's seen three coyotes up by her place. So they are moving in. And like I say, it's not just, sorry, it's not just Swan Haven, it's the whole, it's starting to spread. Somebody trapped some, and what did they do? They took them to another neighborhood, and let them loose there.
So I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance to ask their questions, and I've got councillor O'Toole on the queue next.
Thank you. So a number of years ago, the deer were being fed in the Swan Haven area, and we put that bylaw in, and so, not trying to get off the rabbits here, but have you noticed any change in the deer population in your neighborhood?
Definitely. I know you had a bylaw where we couldn't have bird feeders out in the front yard because that attracts the deers, and that helped quite a bit. I mean, we still have deer come up because, of course, we're on the creek bank there, but there are measures that deter the deer, and that's the Bobex, if you spray your plants and flowers with that, it definitely works on the deer, but it does not work on the rabbits.
Just one more question. Can you give me some kind of an idea on how much money you spent to make your yard pretty again, and because of the damage?
It cost me fourteen hundred dollars to have a landscaper. I've got a big lot, it's a lot and a half, and it's a corner lot. So it cost me fourteen hundred dollars to have the lot re-landscaped, and then my water bill, which I just got on Thursday, was two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
And that was just her front yard, that's not her backyard?
No.
If I can ask Wendy, how much have you...
I didn't do anything because I was afraid that they'd start digging again, and I said, I'm gonna watch, I live right behind Carol Anne, I'll let her do it, see what happens before I spend the money. And sure enough, like I say, it wasn't a week or two by, and they're digging in her yard again, so...
And they mostly seem to come up in the evenings and during the night. So I mean, it's really hard to chase them out of our yards at nighttime when we're sleeping, so it's just like we're fighting a losing battle here against them.
Great, I'm all done with questions, thank you.
So I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I do want to thank you for coming, we really appreciate people coming and talking to us directly, and kind of what our procedure here is, so that we've got a chance to mow on it, we put dealing with your requests at the end of our agenda, so we do have a couple of public hearings we're gonna go through, and you're more than welcome to stick around and see where we go, or you're welcome to go home and watch on YouTube, or just catch up with our staff tomorrow on what gets decided today, but thank you again for coming here, and for anybody else watching, we always do welcome members of the public coming and raising their issues directly with council, that's, we work for you folks, so we appreciate when you come and talk to us.
We do have a petition here, do you folks want to have all the list of the people that we were able to get signage from?
Yeah, I think maybe if you leave it with councillor Teason, just because he's on the end, we can...
Okay.
We can take it and see what kind of neighborhood support there is there.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks so much.
Excellent, thank you again for coming, we appreciate it. And with that, I will move us on to our public hearing, so the first one is a public hearing for land use bylaw amendment C 1260 201, so this is the one for that direct control district, and I will call this public hearing to order, and I'll first of all ask administration to do their presentation on it.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Administration has received an application to amend the land use bylaw to rezone subject properties from residential transition to direct control district. The purpose of this amendment is to provide for the development of an apartment building on a site-specific basis. The owner intends to build an eight-unit apartment building. The combined area of the two lots is seven forty-seven square meters. The lots currently have an unoccupied house. As shown on the map, the subject properties are surrounded by compatible uses, including the Agesan apartment building, multiple apartment buildings to the south, and various fourplexes and multifamily in the area. The site is within the boundary of South Avondale area redevelopment plan. The future land use development concept of the ARP supports the proposed eight-unit apartment building. The applicant is proposing to rezone from RT to DC 41, as the current RT district does not accommodate the applicant's site specifications. While the proposed development meets other site standards such as lot width, front and rear yard setbacks, the proposed DC aims to accommodate variances in lot area, height, and parking. The proposed apartment building is compatible in height and scale with the surrounding buildings. The building is attractive in appearance and will enhance overall streetscape of the area. The building plans and elevation submitted by the applicant form part of the proposed DC 41. The site is located within walking distance of institutional amenities, including the college, and recreational amenities in the Musco CP Park. The development is also within the walking distance to the transit stops. The proposed development will be appropriately landscaped as per the requirements of the land use bylaw. The site is located along 107th Avenue, a corridor with good accessibility and very few private driveways, which allows for a possibility of on-street parking. The proposed amendment was circulated to internal and external stakeholders, notice of rezoning sign was placed on the subject property, and letters were mailed to Agesan neighbors. The applicant also conducted their own public engagement. Administration received one correspondence in response to the notification which is provided as an attachment to the report. Administration considers the proposal to be compatible with the immediate surroundings and supports the site-specific development standards in the form of direct control district. Based on this background and analysis, it is recommended that council give three readings to this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, and first of all, I'll look around my colleagues and see if anybody's got any questions for administration. Councillor Teason.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Bressi. Ms Patel, a question in regards to the seplex, I like it, I like the, sort of the direction that it's going on. There was one letter that asked for us not to build on it, but it just got me to question what the side yard setbacks are from that, because it is a three-story building, and some residents sometimes get concerned about the privacy and people overlooking from some of the top decks. So yeah, what is the side yard setback from other houses?
Thank you through the deputy mayor. The side yard setback for the existing RT zoning is three meters, and the proposed is also three meters. So the requirement is three meter, and the proposed DC district meets that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anybody else in the queue, so now I'll turn to our gallery and online and just ask, is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this land use amendment? Great, if you could just come to the table, and I think you're familiar to many of us, but for those watching, if you could just introduce yourself, I'd appreciate that.
My name is Angie Peters, and I currently own the land that the property is planned for, and we would be constructing the building there if this moves forward. So first, I'd like to thank you for your time, we appreciate that you have this process for addressing variances that are not within the zoning but do fit the South Avondale redevelopment plan. I'll only make a few points because I believe that your administration did an exceptional job of putting together the package of information for you. Particular would like to highlight Zeal Pater because she was very helpful when I had a number of questions for her, and then got good at anticipating what my next question might be, and was helpful also with the public engagement, getting some items out to landowners for me, because that way it would go to landowners and not just to the residents. We only had two, we actually had two replies in the end to the public engagement, the one that's included in your package, and then one person who sent an email over the weekend, and that person said they would be here this evening, so I'm anticipating that. With respect to the variances, the height, it's slightly higher than what is currently permitted, and this extra height allows for the nine-foot ceiling that would be currently standard. The height is really based on what would be an eight-foot ceiling, and it would be a three-story walk-up, just like the others that are on 107th Avenue, and this extra height also allows for the roof with a pitch that's more conventional for now, and also a pitch that allows for solar, which we hope to have solar installed as well. The apartment building would be part of the direct control, although it is different from the zoning, it does fit with the use for the neighborhood. On that particular property, there's a house that's been vacant for at least a decade, and doesn't contribute to the tax base of the city in a large way at all, so this apartment building would be helpful for that. On that property, we could put something like a fourplex, which would allow for four units, however, we are excited to be putting an eight-suite property there to create eight affordable apartments, making that a better use of the land, and also fits with the South Avondale redevelopment plan goals of having higher density in that area. There is a variance as well with the exterior cladding, the zoning would require more stone than what we have, and our proposal has metal instead of stone, metal and stucco. We believe it's a very attractive building for that neighborhood, we're using a local builder who is accustomed to building high-end homes and is good at achieving a classy look with a lower cost, so that the apartments can stay affordable. As I'm sure you know, the vacancy rate currently in Grand Prairie is zero. I believe that we are at a critical point for housing, especially in the affordable range of housing, and with this smaller apartment building, we're quite confident that within 12 months, we would have people living in the residence, so it speeds up the process compared to doing a very large complex. Yeah, I think that's it, unless people have questions for me.
Well, thank you, and I know that at least councillor Berg has a question for you. Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks Deputy Mayor Bressi. So Ms Peters, I love the architectural drawings, it looks like a very attractive building, but when you sat down, I see some color versions there. So you talk about the exterior cladding, is that reflected in some of those images? And if so, you could put them on that X over there so that we could see. Just kind of curious to see what the building would look like, because again, we've got architectural drawings but no conceptual drawings.
For me is right set up for you?
That's right.
Okay. So this is a rendering that our local architect from Fire and Forum did that shows the apartment building itself, and this is the height of the building to the west, that's actually set back quite far, and then on the other side is the height of the apartment building that's right next door.
And so you had mentioned the metal cladding, can you show us on that drawing where that would be?
Metal cladding is, it's actually easier for me to see on my drawing here. Most of it is actually hidden by this tree, should maybe show you this picture instead, I think it's easier.
Okay, very nice. Yeah, thank you.
And so there is that apartment building next door, I think I skipped over the parking variance, that's slick of me just to skip over the parking variance.
Feel free to share it out if you'd like to.
With nine stalls for the eight suites, we actually own two other apartment buildings on 107th Avenue that are of the older style, and each of those apartments have eight suites and eight or nine stalls, depending on how tight people park, and we never have a shortage of parking. And over fifteen years, when I've gone to those buildings, there's never been a problem, no matter the time of day, to find parking on the street, and we actually find also four two-bedroom apartments in that price range, where we manage a lot in Royal Oaks Manor as well, and there is a possibility for people to rent a second stall. Of the thirty stalls that we have available for rent, only a handful are actually ever rented, and people do register their vehicles because they have to, very few people have two vehicles. So we feel that that definitely would be enough parking for the... So we feel that that definitely would be enough parking for the population, the clientele who would be in the building.
I know one question I've got is, one small concern I do have is I get why people behind it wouldn't be enthused about people three stories up, all of a sudden looking down in their backyard in the loss of privacy. Is there any conversation around maybe not having windows or fully transparent windows on that rear side in the upper stories or?
It actually is because of the parking lot that's there. It's actually set back very far. It would be difficult to look into the yard and the people directly behind actually have some trees there as well.
Okay, great. I'm not seeing any of my other council colleagues, so I'll thank you for joining us and just ask you to go back to the gallery. And as you do that, I'll look around again and say, is there anybody else who wants to speak in favor of this proposal? And I'll ask one more time if there's anybody else in the room or online who wants to speak in favor of this proposal. Well, then the other question is, is there anybody here who would like to speak in opposition to this proposal? If you'll just come forward, sir, you've seen the drill. If you'll just come sit at that chair, introduce yourself, and then feel free to share what your concerns are.
My name is Gary Fisher and I live in property just north of this proposed development. And I'm not completely opposed against the development. What am I opposed against is my privacy in my backyard and having eight or nine vehicles parked right outside my fence and the traffic that goes in and out of that and all the dust that it creates in the summer, depending on which way the wind's blowing. And I don't know why they can't put the parking in the front on 107th Avenue.
Any questions for my colleagues? Just that I can understand where you are. Are you directly behind it? Are you?
Directly.
Okay.
The other developments that are there, that existing apartment building, has been there for years, is to the east of me. The two fourplexes are more to the west and it really doesn't affect my privacy or anything, but this unit definitely will.
Is, I'm not aware, is the alley there is a paved or is it gravel?
It's gravel.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing anybody else with questions, so thank you for sharing your concerns. We appreciate you coming here to take the time to do that. And is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition to this proposal? And once again, is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition to this proposal? And then I'll look to my council colleagues. Do you have one more opportunity to ask administration questions if you'd like to? This is your last opportunity to ask administration questions if anybody has any. I'm not seeing any, so with that, I will call this public hearing closed and turn to my colleagues, see if anybody would like to do business arising out of this. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Bressi. Sorry, I thought I saw Counselor Berg push a request to speak, so.
You're first to draw.
All right, well, first to the draw, that's how it goes sometimes. So I'll make the motion that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-201 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
So thank you. And there is no discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call that to question. Mayor Clayton, how do you vote? We got your vote. And that motion carries. Counselor Thiessen, are you willing to keep on going?
Yep, definitely. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-201 being an amendment to the land use bylaw. Just speaking to this, to this motion, I not only commented that I liked the design of the building and I wanted to reassure myself that it wasn't too close to any other residential buildings. The two that I saw right behind, and I think the gentleman here who spoke is one of those two buildings, I'm going to assume the smaller house. But what council and the city of Grand Prairie is really challenged with right now, and we've discussed this over years in fact, is that our vacancy rate and affordability of homes just keeps, well, the vacancy rate keeps dropping and the affordability of homes keeps rising. So we want to keep the housing prices to a certain level. At the same time, over three terms on council, I know that every council has said that we want to do our best to get more people in the downtown area, to liven up the core and to densify where density is supposed to be really, right in the heart of your city like you would go to any other major center and stuff. And the design here, I think, is very thoughtful. I think the setbacks are good. I do see the trees back there, so I don't see myself personally any issues on the privacy of this. And we've got very capable and thoughtful builders here that are proposing this project. So for all those reasons, I think this is a perfectly fine project to go through and I look forward to any other discussion or debate my council colleagues might have.
Thank you. And I have Counselor Berg in the queue.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor Bressi. Yeah, this is something that I support. It cleans up a derelict building, architecturally attractive. I do feel that it enhances the neighborhood. Again, I do feel for Mr. Fisher because privacy would be a concern, but I also look at a recent example from two years ago. It's on the corner of 105th Avenue and 101st Street, similar type of building with eight units and eight or nine parking stalls in behind. Again, I think it actually enhances the neighborhood and we haven't received any complaints from neighbors about that privacy. So I understand your concern, but I'm optimistic that it won't be an issue.
Thank you. I'm not seeing anybody else in the queue. I will insert myself though in terms of I do support make sure that we have housing built in our community and I think where housing gets built near an amenity that's such great recreational amenity but also gives easy walking to downtown to various services that people need, I think that's a good thing. I definitely do hear the concerns about traffic, traffic through that alley and I'm not personally too worried about it because watching buildings of a similar size and talking to people who live in buildings of some size and live behind them, that definitely has been the, low traffic is definitely the experience I've heard from other buildings too and observe myself. That being said, I do wonder, counsel, if in these older neighborhoods where we're seeing intensification, if we do need to talk. And I know it's kind of been the bane of our existence in other neighborhoods, talking about paving places that aren't paved. But I do really, I'm really sympathetic to that concern actually about it not being a paved laneway when you're getting more traffic on it. It's one thing for all single detached to not be paved, but I don't know, it just, it feels a little bit different when you got rental units there. And so that is something that in our older neighborhoods, we get intensification, we might have to have conversations about. But for me, it is, I get why this maybe isn't a perfect development for everybody that's there, but for me, looking at the community as a whole, I think it really is beneficial to the neighborhood as a whole. And I even think it is beneficial to that block, getting derelict property cleaned up and getting some people who can live on the park, I think is a good thing. So I will be supporting this. And I'm not seeing anybody else in the queue, so I will call this to question. And I am in favor. And that motion carries. And Counselor Thiessen, if you'd keep on going.
Yeah, thank you very much Deputy Mayor Bressi. I'd move that council have third reading at this meeting.
Thank you. And again, this motion has to carry unanimously, otherwise we cannot continue tonight. And I will call that to question. As I log into these grab, I'll vote in favor. We're just waiting for Mayor Clayton. And that motion carries. And Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Bressi. I'd move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-201, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you. That motion is in order and open to debate, but I'm not seeing anybody in the queue, so I will call that to question as well. And that motion carries, which concludes the business on that public hearing. And now I will bring us to the public hearing on land use bylaw amendment C-1260-202. I'll call this hearing to order and ask administration to make your presentation.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Administration is proposing to amend the land use bylaw. The proposed text amendment will add the use religious assembly to two commercial districts, commercial local and commercial general. This amendment is triggered by inquiries received from groups interested in establishing religious assemblies within CL and CG districts. Religious assembly is a use in number of land use districts as shown on the slide, including arterial commercial, commercial transition, and central commercial district. Administration proposes to add this use in local commercial and general commercial districts. The amendment poses a minimal risk as it aligns with the existing land use patterns of the city. Through our research, administration believes this use did exist in the previous land use bylaw under CL and CG districts and that it was an unintended omission in the transition from C-1100 to C-1260. The proposed amendment supports social inclusion and diversity and community building. It also provides an opportunity for underutilized commercial spaces to be activated and keeping it as a discretionary use ensures that each application is evaluated on case-by-case basis. This allows for appropriate considerations regarding compatibility with edges and uses, parking availability, and other land use bylaw regulations. The proposed amendment was circulated to relevant stakeholders and no comments were received. Based on this background and analysis, administration recommends that council give three readings to this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for administration? Not seeing any, I'll ask if there's anybody here that's in favor of this land use bylaw amendment. And again, I'll ask if there's anybody in favor of this. For a third time, I'll ask if there's anybody in the gallery online that's in favor of this land use bylaw amendment and wishes to speak to it. And I'll ask if there's anybody opposed to this land use bylaw amendment. And again, I'll invite anybody that's opposed to come have a seat and share their opposition. And a third time, I'll ask if there's anybody in this room opposed to this amendment. And I do see Counselor O'Toole in the queue, so there is one last opportunity to ask administration questions. Counselor O'Toole.
I am willing to take care of business when the time comes.
Excellent. Well, you're the only one in the queue, so I will call this public hearing closed and then I'll turn it to you, Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much. I move the council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-202, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you. And there is no debate on a first reading, so I'll call that to question. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole.
I move the council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-202. And this is just a cleanup of the bylaw that allows some flexibility.
I'm not seeing anybody in the queue, so I will call that to question. And Counselor O'Toole.
I move the council have third reading of bylaw C-1260-202 at this meeting.
Thank you. Again, this must carry unanimously for us to carry on tonight. And Counselor O'Toole.
And I thank you Deputy Mayor Bressi. I move the council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-202, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
I will call that one to question too. Thank you, counsel. That motion carries. And that brings us on to our third public hearing, which I will call to order and I'll invite administrations present on road closure bylaw C-1488. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Aaron Council. I'm Don C. I'm here to present you road closure bylaw C-1488. As shown in this image here on the slide, this is the proposed road closure outlined in red. The proposed road closure is located in Kensington neighborhood and it will be closing road plan 1125887 and the total area will be 0.533 hectares. Upon review, the subject area is a surplus to the city and it's also a part of the future stormwater management and commercial development in the Kensington outline plan, which was approved by city council on February 24th, early of this year. Here's a slide of comparison, compare of the two. The left is the proposed road closure map and the right is the land use map from the approved Kensington outline plan, which I had mentioned previously. And if I bring your attention to the red circle, there's a gray square box in there and it's shown the future stormwater management and the commercial land use. Administration recommends the city council to give three readings to bylaw C-1488.
Thank you for the presentation and I have Counselor Berg in the queue.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor Bressi. So as you'd mentioned, we'd already dealt with this piece of land or this area back in February. So essentially what we're presented with today is dotting some i's, crossing some t's and that this was city road allowance that we simply don't need. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not seeing anybody else in the queue, so I will turn to the gallery online and ask if there's anybody who would like to speak in favor of this bylaw. And again, I'll ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor of this bylaw. And again, I will ask if there's anybody who'd like to speak in favor of this road closure bylaw. And I'll ask if there's anybody who would like to speak opposed to this road closure bylaw. And again, I'll ask if there's anybody that would like to speak opposed to this bylaw. And a third time, I will ask if there's anybody who would like to speak opposed to this bylaw. Counsel, last chance to ask questions if anybody would like to. Not seeing any, I will close this public hearing and look to my colleagues, see if anybody would like to do business. And Counselor Thiessen, again, first on the draw.
Oh, there's somebody else in the queue?
There is.
I thought we were going to show the work. Was that Counselor Polat?
There were four of you, actually.
Oh, wow. We're all in there. Oh, sorry, guys. You lose. You snoozed. I'd move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1488, being a road closure bylaw.
Certainly in order and no discussion or debate, so I'll call that to question. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Bressi. I'd move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1488, being a road closure bylaw. Just speaking to this, I don't want to reiterate the words of Counselor Berg, but we're crossing our i's, dotting our t's, something like that, and we're getting rid of this road allowance here. So I support this and I hope council will support it all the way through too.
Excellent. Thank you. And I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll call that to question. Motion carries. And Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much Deputy Mayor Bressi. I'd move that council have third reading at this meeting.
And this has to pass unanimously for us to carry on tonight. I'll call that to question. And Counselor Thiessen.
All right, finish off the business. I'd move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1488, being a road closure bylaw.
Definitely in order and I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll call that to question. That motion carries, which concludes our public hearings for the night and means we get to delegation business. So I will recognize first of all, Counselor Polat.
Thanks Chair Bressi. I guess I just had a couple of questions who have been on this, maybe looking for some business arising. I'm just wondering, I'm not sure which former executive would be able to answer this, but have we done any education awareness kind of programs or is that something we've looked at doing? As this is, it is a problem and I have a lot of empathy for these folks. It's, it is a safety concern and it's obviously affecting some quality of life. So just wondering if we've actually looked at that or if there would be something we could launch for that.
Chief Lemieux.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we have, but not recently. So this, there was an education campaign done in, I'm going to say February, March 2023, but not in the recent past.
Okay, so we have done this previously, so we've got some history to draw upon if we wanted to look at launching another.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor. So a couple of questions, I'm sure these are for Chief Lemieux. The delegation had mentioned that the school has been an issue. Have we had any correspondence or with the school board of the school specifically that they've had or seeing issues with it?
So we have not received any complaints recently from, certainly haven't received any complaints from the school.
Okay. And a follow-up if I may? Please. Are you aware if bylaw is or isn't doing any? Are you aware if bylaw is or isn't doing any enforcement around feeding?
So back again, two years ago, when we did enforce, or we did the education campaign, we also did a certain amount of enforcement. That is, when we were notified of a particular resident that was suspect suspected of feeding rabbits, we did knock on the door and did have a conversation. The challenge for us in enforcement is it's very difficult to enforce because we don't have access to people's private property. So it was, it was more an extension of the education, is educating people and then having a conversation and explaining to people why it's against the bylaw to feed wildlife.
Hey, thank you.
Councillor O'Toole.
Yeah, yeah, while we're on that subject, was there any people very adamant that they wanted to feed the animals? You know, usually when you tell somebody in a public education program, we go through the reasons why we don't want them. But as you say, does anybody, can you think of anybody that stood out that was quite against what we're doing?
Chief Lemieux.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I will say is there are individuals that see the rabbits as a problem and there are other individuals that see the rabbit as a good thing. So we see, we see and hear both sides.
Thank you.
Councillor Teason.
Yeah, hopefully administration has an answer for this one. So I brought it up earlier in regards to the beaver problem. When we, when we enlisted the help of trappers or dam busters, how expensive was that to our tax base?
Chief Clubin.
Yeah, thanks Chair Bressi. I know we, it depends on the season how expensive it is, just call it 20,000 plus or minus.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Palat.
Thanks Chair Bressi. Just following up on an earlier question, do you know, is it in there, have we ever had anybody receive a fine for the, through bylaw for this?
I'm not aware of any fines being issued in any, yeah, we have not issued any fines specifically for the feeding of the wild, the rabbits.
Okay, and I guess another question for administration, if we were looking at, I guess if I had an appetite to launch a, have our admin look at launching again, a education awareness session around, around this issue, would we need to formalize that or what would admin be looking for for that?
Chief Lemieux.
Thank you for the question through the chair. There's some new information that was shared today by the delegation in terms of what's happening in Canmore. We did speak to Canmore a couple of years ago, but that's dated information now. So I think it might be wise for us to revisit what some of the options are. Certainly administration would be prepared to, to do some more research and bring back some options for council's consideration if you deem that appropriate.
Okay, no, as I could do business arising or if there's others in the queue, I can hop out and come back in.
You're the only one in the queue, so if you've got business, I'd appreciate it.
No, I just make a motion that we direct administration to bring back to the appropriate standing committee a report on options on how we can deal with our feral rabbit issue that we're having in Grand Prairie. Leave it at that for now and hopefully the administration can come back with some options of what we could do with her. That's, I'm hoping is an education campaign, some different options, but I don't want to get prescriptive on that as well, so.
Great, thank you. I know for, for me, I really, again, I really appreciate the delegation coming and speaking and I was kind of nervous about what we'd be hearing today in terms of, I'm glad we're talking about education and things like that, at least as a first course, because I know when it gets to other options, those definitely aren't as fun to have as a community. But for me, it really is a no-brainer that we at least start with doing a really robust public education campaign. And I'd love us to get to committees, we can talk about what that looks like. Personally, I'd love us to do not just a social media thing, but I also think it might be a direct mail thing might be worthwhile, because as I go through this committee, I really do see issues and I want to make sure that everybody in the community does hear about it. But that's a conversation we could have at committee, but I really think that we should be doing work, at least for really strong education, see how far that gets us before we maybe get in a position where we have to explore other options. Councillor Teason.
Yeah, thank you very much Deputy Mayor Bressi. Yeah, I could support this motion as a bunny lover, bunny owner. Even my bunnies procreated, but don't worry, it's on a farm, not in town. But you know, I don't worry so much. I hear the issues with the rabbits. When I hear feral rabbits, I think like Watership Down, the old cartoon that you probably shouldn't show your kids. But what, what I, what I think of even more so when I hear feral is what are delegation intimated towards? And that's the fact that it's drawing other wild animals up into a residential neighborhood. You know, coyotes, you know, they're, they're pretty feral creatures themselves and you know, they'll eat what they can eat. And if there's kids or families or even a resident, you know, they get trapped, that could be something that the bunny population would draw those people up in there. I think education is a good start, but a lot of people don't understand how smart rabbits are. And if there are residents and neighbors that are feeding the rabbits, the rabbits will know who those places are and they'll keep going back there to be fed. So it may be even more than just educating the humans, but how do we re-educate their rabbits? I really think that this will go a long way to curbing the human situation end of this, where they're feeding the bunnies and then welcoming them into the neighborhoods and potential other pests and criggers. But I don't know if that's, that's the end. And I say this as a bunny lover, you know, they do procreate like quite a bit. My bunny had 12, so luckily there's a farm that wanted all of them. So, so we're pretty lucky here. They're just left to run wild in the River Valley and, and then come up into the neighborhood. So I think education is a start, but I don't know if that's a finish. So I really look forward to the options that administration's going to bring forward. Hearing that it only costs $20,000 for us to address our beaver problem a few years back, gives me a little bit of hope that maybe there's a partnership we can have with local trappers or maybe First Nations peoples who, you know, might be able to do something with, with this. So it's not just a loss of life, rabbit life that is. So I will support this motion. I look forward to the report coming forward.
Great, thank you. I also do want to acknowledge the residents who, who reached out to me and said, well, sorry Mayor Clayton, you got way to left of my screen.
Yeah, I've been there since the beginning, but that's okay. I just wanted to say that I can't support the motion as it, as is, because I don't think it's enough. As mentioned, we did a campaign two years ago and at that point, people that were feeding the rabbits were well aware that this is something that's not appropriate. If people want to have rabbits or explore rabbits or visualize and see rabbits in the wild, that's one thing. But to entice them into people's yards and create a nuisance, create bringing other animals, create a potential opportunity to spread diseases, and then you add the coyote element, which could bite dogs or children, it's simply, we can't leave this as long as coming back with options. I was somebody who had met with multiple residential people two years ago when we decided to do that educational campaign. And in my opinion, an educational campaign could start ASAP, reminding people that actually against our bylaws and actually their actions of feeding the people, or rather the rabbits in their backyards is something that is finable. And so I think at a minimum, an education campaign could start ASAP. If council is interested in seeing a report come back on what the options are, if it still persists after an education campaign, then I would be happy to support this. But as this is right now, to have a report come back that will say, you can do an education campaign, you could do this, you could do this, I think it's too little, too late. And I think an education campaign should be the first step ASAP and the report should entail other options, assuming that an education campaign wasn't successful. So as the motion is worded currently, I can't support it because I simply don't think it's enough. Thanks.
Thank you Mayor Clayton. Councillor O'Toole.
Yes, thank you very much. I was wondering if administration knows through parks, how many of our trees that we planted have been destroyed by the rabbits and any other damage associated to rabbits like fields where there's holes, much like the yards that were expressed today? And if we can do something based on that information.
Chief Clubin.
Thanks Chair Bressi. I don't have anything on hand. We'd have to bring that back.
Okay, well, I, I would like, I'm much like Mayor Clayton, whereas I would like to see this go a little farther than just what we have intended with the motion. But I will support this aspect, but I'd like to see us go back a bit further. Causing grief with their neighbors.
Thank you. Councillor Palat.
Thanks Chair Bressi. And lightly just hearing a couple of my colleagues, and I guess that was my original comment. I'm just, I want to try asking our administration if this motion works or if they would consider this as two separate motions. But basically what I would put as, that's been added and proceeded with an immediate and information education campaign on this topic. So it's been added into our escribe, which is another sentence after what was in it. But I'm wondering if that's intent would be two separate motions for admin or if they could see that as just one motion and bring a report back and.
Yeah, I'm seeing admin kind of nod their heads and I definitely think if the will of council is to have it as one motion, I'm definitely okay with it as one motion.
Okay.
I'm not seeing anybody waving me down, saying that's a terrible idea, so.
So I appreciate admin updating the motion and the what's currently in our, in our escribe is what I'd like to propose that we'd have, and I can read aloud, a council direct administration to bring a report back to appropriate standing committee regarding options on how to deal with feral rabbit issue within the city and proceed, proceed with an immediate information education campaign on this topic.
Mayor Clayton.
Thanks Chair Bressi. I appreciate that amendment as, you know, that really addresses something for immediate action. I think it's extremely important for the neighborhood to know what the expectations are. If people want to have rabbit, you can do as somebody like councillor Teason does and be a responsible pet owner of a rabbit. But having feral rabbits and feeding them in your yard is not acceptable. It's not okay in regards to what it does for the neighborhood, what it does to creating a safe environment, what it does of bringing other animals into the park. And as mentioned, this rabbit issue just continues to be out of control. It was, I didn't hear anything from anyone last year, so I thought that maybe the education campaign from two years ago had been working. But to hear now that the issue is worse than it was, worse than it's ever been, that's a problem. And so I really appreciate the immediate steps of an education campaign and then exploring what else is possible following that. So I appreciate the amendment and will support it.
Thank you. Councillor Teason.
Yeah, thanks Deputy Mayor Bressi. Yeah, I could have supported either motion. I think what was proposed was just a suite of options that council could mull over. I really appreciate the mayor's like, you know, putting her foot down and saying, you know what, we have this already, we don't need the report and we can get on this right away. And I can support that. So thanks for the amendment. Both are appropriate here and I'm hopeful that we can get closer to finding a solution for the residents in Swaneevamine neighborhood that this is causing problems for.
Thank you. I also think that when the report comes, we can have this, this discussion, but I think we probably need to find a way to get this on the communications calendar every, every year. I think you get new people that move into a neighborhood, they, they forget or they didn't, or they didn't hear. And so this might be something that just unfortunately we need to keep on educating people year after year after year. But we could talk about that when the report comes. I'm not seeing anybody else in the queue, so I will ask councillor Palat if he'd like to close. You okay? All right, then with that, I will call this to question. That motion carries. Any further business on this matter? I'm not seeing any, so that brings us to our roundtable portion. And Mayor Clayton, I'll start with you.
Thank you. I appreciate that councillor Bressi. I am going to jump off as I'm in an airport waiting for a plane. So I will update council on some of the things that we've been working on in the last while at the next meeting. So I wish you all good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Palat, I'll start with you.
Okay, thanks for the, I don't often get to go first, so it's a nice one. I guess my highlights for last week were on behalf of Mayor Clayton, I got to go to the mid-sized mayor's caucus in Sylvan Lake last week. Some good conversations with Atco, again, giving a little bit more sympathy of why their distribution charges are so high. They have definitely the lowest kilometer or customers per kilometer in the different four companies that service Alberta. So I'm not giving them any excuses or outs, but I did gain a little bit more empathy as we got a little more education on that. We did have Mr. Williams message us that safe, affordable and beautiful were three of the comments that he made around his new appointment to being the municipal affairs minister. And we did have a little bit of a chat with Premier Smith. The other thing that was good about the conference, the conversation, I really appreciated, I know councillor Bressi's been working on this with AB Munis, is to talk about how we can change procurement and some, some options that are floating around the province to try to make procurement a better process potentially for the city and potentially some savings on our capital taxes moving forward and our, and our taxes in that matter. From there, after that, I got back and I got to go with a lot of our council colleagues to a youth advisory council. Always love that. We have probably the most engaged community group, youth group I've ever seen since I've been on council and sad to see some of them graduate, but great to have them while we had them and just love the conversation we have there. And I'm pretty confident we're going to have a pretty engaged youth council for years to come. So I appreciate the work being done there. Also had the backyard barbecue busted at the Blount Center last week. And from there, a bunch of us took off to the FCM conference. So I was in Ottawa last week. And again, one of the breakout sessions was around procurement and I thought it was quite interesting how the gentleman made a comment of $100,000 light standard in Europe turns into a $1 million light standard in North America. And it's something we've talked about at this council here most, but I do hope in the future we have more consideration and conversations about some of our design centers. I appreciate talking to some other members from other municipalities, talking about it being called bubble wrap. And it was kind of an interesting way of looking at how we continually advance, how we do things with, with capital expenses. But sometimes it's not necessarily all that much better. And I wonder for that extra 5% to make it a little bit safer if we're spending twice as much money, if it's really worth it or not. So I'm looking for those conversations in the future and that's my report.
Thank you. Councillor Teason.
Ooh, normally I do get to go first. Thank you Deputy Mayor Bressi. Yeah, it was, it was a good busy week. I'll start off with my external committees. I had a meeting with Grand Spirit Foundation at Pleasant View Lodge in Spirit River recently. Some of the items that we discussed, certainly approving our strategic plan and our 2026 to 2028 business plan, which we submitted to the province. I think our strategic plan is available and up on the Grand Spirit Foundation website. So if anybody wants to check that out, I also have copies I can send people electronically as well here on council or in the community if you're interested at all. We also signed on, this will make councillor Bressi really happy, we sent out a tender of contracts for our natural gas contract. And instead of going with RMA's canoe, which Grand Spirit had gone with for a long time, we actually chose to go with the better priced Alberta Munis contract for natural gas. So that'll hopefully save our housing management bodies and seniors lodges a few more pennies, you know, to, to balance their own budgets as we move forward. Here's one source of discussion, and I think it's important to bring up, is the board received a letter from Alberta Health Services in regards to Pleasant View Lodge and the 14 continuing care spaces that we, that we had arranged there. The letter informed us that Alberta Health Services, although contracted to help with the continuing care portion of those rooms, no, does not have any staff to accommodate that. And there's a variety of reasons. Alberta Health Services, I'm sure knows more, they didn't detail it for us, but one of the things we suspect is, is probably there's a little bit farther out there in the community and doesn't have the same housing options for workers. So many are traveling from Dawson Creek, from Grand Prairie, just to go help and serve there. So it's unfortunate because on one case, you know, some of our seniors require that continuing care in that area. Another, in another case, it put a big hole in our budget. So our executive director talked with the province and for right now, they're allowing us to move in seven regular seniors into that who don't require continuing care. But when those nurses become available and Alberta Health Services takes over, that's when the decision-making is going to happen. So there was a lot of discussion around the table as to, do we want to move seniors around two or three times if that's the case? Or how do we, how do we meet the demand? And also, how do we create spaces in small rural communities for workers to help with these types of projects where people want to live? That's why we built the lodge there is because people wanted to live there. So how do we get other professionals into that community and our own here in Grand Prairie? So lots of, lots of things to think about. Another thing to think about for council, I do want to throw this out there, Grand Spirit Foundation, just recently on April 11th, celebrated their 65th anniversary. They officially became seniors on behalf of seniors. And we are having a big celebration on June 28th. We're going to involve the entire community. It's going to happen down at Musca CP Park. Mayor Clayton signed on to give greetings. I hear they got a really crazy emcee and live entertainment and burgers and hot dogs and we're inviting everybody, not just all the seniors, to come down to Musca CP Park. It runs from 11:00 AM till 3:00 PM on June 28th. So everyone in the community, grab your grandma, hug your grandpa, bring your family and let's go have some fun on behalf of Grand Spirit Foundation. It's going to be a glorious time. some fun. On behalf of Grand Spirit Foundation, it's going to be a glorious time. All right, so now into the fun stuff. I got the absolute pleasure to take part in some of the stomped events. Before I left, I didn't get to take part in the stomp, but all the three events I did, the bust out barbecue and the stomped pancake breakfast hosted by the City of Grand Prairie, was truly a pleasure to sit there with my council colleagues and serve sausages and pancakes and all sorts of the goodies for breakfast for people for two hours outside the Bonnet's Energy Center in Helen Rice Plaza. So I had a lot of fun there, and I'm sure people had fun watching Counselor O'Connor and I have tongue fights later and all sorts of stuff, just being goofy. But that's what it's all about, raising the community spirit. And finally, yeah, I was one of the councillors. I got to go to FCM, and I got to take in infrastructure plenary, as well as had many, many conversations, a little bit of a tour around, connected with our MP Chris Workington down there. And I got to watch the leaders talk and discuss what their visions are going for the future post-election. And there was one term that our new Prime Minister Mark Carney used once, and it kind of triggered me a little bit. I wasn't sure what it was. And then he used it two more times. And that was, we're going to start moving towards creating deeply affordable housing. And so I'm not quite sure what that means. I'm sure it's housing that's below the affordable housing standard, but purely built by government, but more to come still too. I'll be keeping my eye on that as housing is a passion of mine and every member on council here and in our community, since we have a 0% vacancy rate. But if you want to know more about it, I'd love to share, and I'll tell you later. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much. I attended the Musquea Medical Centre groundbreaking. This was a very well-attended event with people coming from all the way to the Northwest Territories border and all around the peace countries, whether they were part of a council or a town or an individual that had donated money to make sure that we can teach doctors here in Grand Prairie. And there was a number of doctors that spoke. I spoke to a lot of doctors. The U of A was here, the Northwest Polytech spoke, and the indigenous community gave blessings. And like I said, it was an amazing event. I also attended the Grand Prairie Christian School Grade Six class at the city hall, right in here, where we teach the students in their education about how a city council meeting would take place. We get them in behind the monitors here. We give them some questions, and it's amazing some of their questions and some of their answers. But we do a mock council meeting, and it's a good thing. I've got two more tomorrow. What else we got here? I went to the Grand Prairie stomped appreciation barbecue out at Evergreen Park at the Old Timers Cabin. And once again, it was talking about their concerns and how they can make the event better, but they just need more money. I also attended the 3D Children's Society presentation, where they look at children that are quite sick, that need treatment, not necessarily in town, but out of the community, out of the country. And this was held at the Holy Cross School. And we ended up giving, or we, I attended, but they gave the money out and they received about $3,000 worth of gift cards to pay for gas, to pay for meals. And included in that was a very nice computer that this young fellow can then can use as a help in his education and have fun with. Yes, it is a game ready. But the neat thing was, some of the kids that were in the class played soccer, so this young fellow could get money and it worked out really well. They're a very emotional event to attend. I met with a resident that had some concerns about not understanding his tax concerns. I got him got him in touch with the right people at the city here. And I understand it was a very good meeting, and he learnt a lot. Also, provincial announcement for police funding. We had that money already, but the province wanted to come down and make the announcement. And so we're still good. We're still on budget and even less than what we anticipated we spent so far. I also went to the Bonnet's Bust Out with my family to the barbecue, and also the Alberta Centre workshop. And this is two workshop days, and it's about human trafficking and how we can identify the situation and act upon it. If you don't know, Paul Brandt is very, very adamant about stopping it. He's traveling the country to stop body rub partners and human trafficking used for either sex or drugs. I attended the Grand Prairie 10th Annual Grand Prairie Composite High School stomped breakfast. I go there because it's just down the street, and my grandchildren go to that school, and I do that to support them. Businesses after 5:00, I went to the Krennic Dion and Associates of RBC Dominion Securities. They had an open house at their new building. And I did attend the stomped on Friday night with my wife. And it was a good event, very, very busy. If you were in a hurry to get out or in a hurry to get in, it wasn't great for you. It's a bit of an issue to get in and out of there, but then the entertainment's fun. And I also went today to the police. We had Police Department, and we had five experienced officers graduate today. And these are inspectors, they're investigators, they're very, very well-educated at this point in time. But they do have to go through a process because we bring them in from other parts of the country. And they need to understand what laws are applicable and how to put the law together for you in Alberta. So if you're from Ontario or BC or anywhere in between or beyond, this is a thing there. And also, I went out to Sexsmith, and we went and watched my grandson play football at the Sexsmith Community Center. And, you know, we look at the stuff that we have in the city, and I'm very proud that we have the facilities that we do. Walking across that football field, there was high spots and low spots. And I'm just glad that we have what we have here, and it's being used as much as you can. I go to watch them on Saturdays, and it's busy from 9:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night. And so it's getting very well-used. And that is my report, sir.
Thank you, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Burke.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So a couple of my committees. I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Advisory Committee. It's a committee made up of business people from across the city. And I'm proud to be part of that. One of the discussions was around recent incentives on construction of apartments, 100 units and plus. And we got some positive feedback from the room on that. So hopefully that will lead to some relief in our rental market. And Grand Prairie Regional Tourism, the AGM is tomorrow for anybody that's interested. And everything else actually involves a lot of food, and it's not really working for me. Youth Advisory Group with City Council, so that's a committee that I sit on with Counselor O'Connor. We had some wonderful tacos there, eight graduates. And it's too bad that Grandpa O'Connor isn't here because he just loves to get all choked up. He's so proud of those kids, as am I. They're intelligent, they're engaged, and I know the future is in great hands with these people. And it's my honor to actually be associated with them and be part of their story. And with that, with a number of them moving on, there will be some openings within the Youth Advisory Council. So we just advise you to keep your ears open for the intake on that. Earlier today, it was a kickoff for Seniors Week, and Counselor O'Toole did the proclamation and enjoyed a burger there. And that was down at Bonnet's. Stomped Parade, again, Counselor O'Toole was throwing candy at me. I got to watch it from outside my business, but he was on the float waving and doing a great job there. Bust Out BBQ, we did that right after our committees. The city's first annual pancake breakfast. And it was something that I was actually prepared to be flipping pancakes on and cooking sausages. And we get there and the caterers were looking after that. So I think somebody took care of us on that one. Mr. Burke? We were all campaigning to cook, and he said, not a chance. There's liability there, I think. So anyway, but we still got to serve. And I was the guy standing between Counselor Thiessen and Counselor O'Connor. So made for an interesting and fun morning. Attended the two mixers, Krennic Dion, and Angie Saltman did her second Indigenous Business Mixer at her IT Horizons business. So it's been a lot of eating this past week, and now I need to do a lot of walking in the next couple of weeks. So thank you.
Great, thank you. I think we did pretty good serving pancakes. Maybe we can graduate up to some ceremonial flips next year. And if we don't blow that, maybe they'll let us actually do some flip in one year. But I get why we need to earn that trust. I don't trust politicians with a flipper and a bunch of public either. One thing I do want to highlight that's already been mentioned, but I really do want to highlight, it was the Alberta Centre Against Human Trafficking Workshop that Counselor O'Toole, I went to. And I really did appreciate two days getting to talk about human trafficking is an issue that quite intentionally by the people who traffic is hidden in our community. And it's something that, unlike other types of crime and unlike other types of social disorder, it's not something that I really hear about when I knock on doors or we have members of the public coming in and speaking to us about. And it's because there's some really terrible people that are working very hard to keep it that way. And so I really did appreciate getting to be with our service providers who are working directly with people in our community who are impacted. And I really do think it's something that, it got me reflecting on, I don't know if we've done a good job as leaders of this community talking about it enough and raising enough where if the community doesn't see it, I think it's our job to spend more time talking about the people who need the most help in our community. And so it definitely led to some, not the most fun self-reflection, but hopefully some self-reflection that comes out of good things or produce some good things. I got to attend, as council knows, I recently became Chair of the Apex Pension Board, which is a pension plan that we participate in to attract some executive talent. And I got to attend my second meeting there. And holy smokes, is being on a pension board kicking my butt when it comes to the technical knowledge there, but have some really good subject matter experts on that board support me. And I'm really appreciating getting to learn about an entirely new world for me. So really look forward to work on that board. I also got to attend the Upper Bound Conference while I was in Edmonton. It was a conference that happened in Edmonton. It was about artificial intelligence. And got to hear some real success stories, one session from ATB about artificial intelligence really helping organizations do more and do more with less. But also got to hear a few stories of artificial intelligence not going awry and not being good for organizations. And I think the session I appreciated the most was actually talking about what should governance bodies of large organizations do with artificial intelligence. And definitely talked about some policy frameworks. And I think we should be talking more about what are their policies, what are our expectations as the governors of this organization, but what it should do. But I think the best thing I heard a speaker do, and I've heard it a couple of times now, is as governance boards, we should be pushing for more and more rapid, not adoption, but literacy, and really be making sure, asking questions and resourcing organizations so that every single staff person understands AI and understands where it can be used in their job, but equally as important where it shouldn't be used in their job. And so I did appreciate that language, though, of there's a lot of organizations pushing for rapid adoption. That's not the correct course. Instead, of push for rapid literacy, which I think is slightly different. And so had some good takeaways from that conference as well. And that's everything I wanted to share. So with that, I will call our meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your work today.